All right.
Hi, everyone. I am reconvening the open session to the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is June 21st, 2023 at 7:06 PM. We have already established that we have a quorum. I'd like to request that all members of the public be respectful of everyone at this meeting. Please, could you ensure that you have silenced your cell phones? And please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. All right. Are we ready? All right. And we are going to adjourn to the public hearing of the transfer of funds from the education fund to the operations and maintenance fund. Can I have a motion in a second to move into the public hearing?
Motion.
I'll second. And then, Mr. Fayer, if you could please come to the podium and explain.
So the amended budget is the same. And we presented last month to make changes for the construction projects. Are we talking about the amended budget? I'm sorry.
We're talking about the transfer.
Oh, the fund transfers, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So the summary of all of them, we have five different transfers going on tonight. Or four different transfers going on tonight, and they are strictly based on the statutes that we are liable to or we are able to communicate what we're doing with the funds. Also, because of fund accounting, we can only expend monies out of certain funds for certain purposes. With these particular transfers tonight, many of them having to do with the construction. At the beginning of the construction project, we pledged our own monies on hand that we had in our reserves to pay for the construction. These funds were not initially earmarked for construction projects, but we pledged that when we went out to bid or we went out to put out for bonds to pay for their construction, but also said we would pay for projects with reserves on hand. So we have the resolution authorizing inter-fund transfer from the Ed Fund to the O and M Fund in the amount of $2 million. That is to, again, that will then be transferred because we are not able to transfer directly from the education fund to capital projects. Capital projects is where we're paying all of the expenses for the construction project. We can't transfer directly from Ed to capital projects because of Illinois statute. We have to transfer it first from Ed to O and M, then from O and M to capital projects. It's strictly a mechanism to get the money into the correct fund, but due to full transparency, we need to do it this way. The other transfers are the interest from working cash to education. That's one we do every year. Working cash fund throughout the year accumulates interest. We have no expenses that come out of that fund, but the reserves that we do have in there accumulate interest. If you don't transfer the interest earned in that fund at the end of the year, it stays there and you can't do anything with it. What we want to do is put that to good use. So what we do is we transfer the interest to a fund most in need. In this case, we're transferring to the education fund. This year, because there's a healthy fund balance, because a lot of the monies pledged for the working cash bond sale for the construction project are sitting in that fund, we have $169,000 that will then be transferred to the education fund. This is just a good use of those funds up there. Finally, we have the resolution debating the working cash fund to the operations and maintenance and capital projects fund. This is another mechanism that allows us to transfer from the working cash bond sale. We then are able to transfer those funds to either the operations and maintenance of the capital projects fund. In this case, they're going to capital projects and they'll offset the expenditures that we currently have for the projects. Okay. Let's summarize everything.
Do board members have any questions, anything additional information we can provide at this time? No?
Yeah, the big thing is it's two things. We have to do these by Illinois statute. We have to make the transfers this way. The other thing we feel this is being fully transparent. There are some other ways that we could do it, removing some steps like you can do it from operations and maintenance capital projects if you really wanted to. We feel it's fully transparent and going by the Illinois statutes to do it this way.
Do any members of the public have any questions on this topic or want to ask anything? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
So moved.
All right. With the board secretary, please call the roll and vote. Yes.
Yes.
Saji Phillip. Christine Soika.
Yes.
All right. Public hearing is closed. All right. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular enclosed meetings of May 17th, 2023. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any questions, corrections, comments about the minutes that we went over? All right. If we'll all in those, will all those in favor of approving the minutes of May 17th, 2023 say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Perfect. Minutes are approved. Next item is approve of the payments of bills. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $2,44,890.35?
Motion. So moved.
Any questions regarding the bills? All right. Board secretary, please call the roll call vote.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jaclyn Boujde? Yes. Raphael Kevore?
Yes.
Saji Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Right. The bills are approved to be paid. I'm moving on to parent teacher association report. Do we have a representative from the PTA that would like to report to the board?
We do. Yay.
Hi, I'm Sylvia. On behalf of Katie Hiddick and myself, we're excited to go ahead and take over as PTA co-presidents for the next two years. There is really not much to report. I think Stephen Kegel did a wonderful job and we're excited to go ahead and move forward and work with you guys all. Thank you.
We're excited to have you both.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I think Katie and Sylvia spent every day of the last week of school at school between field day and the Kona ice truck and registration. You both did so much, we're so appreciative. Those were long days, so thank you. I was like, gosh, we should, maybe we should pay them. They're here so often, but no, we're really looking forward to working with both of you as well. And, you know, we'll look forward to hearing from your report in August about all the great things planned for the upcoming school year. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. School activity report. Does anyone from the board or administration have any good news that they want to share with the district?
I think I go with, um, which is like, uh, uh, May and away from three kids, but you also know, really exciting kind of market. Looking out here on the fun ways, I know on the flip side, you know, for our graduation with the wonderful, and it's been, that started last year. There is a team, um, has been excited to complete with that, most teachers have a really great thought again. This year, our student reports, uh, it's been three, uh, first grader. Uh, and right after, she flipped the next day, well, of, um, forty-four, same thing for me, there is, there is, um, a big, like, so we lost all of their family as well. Their ability, my, your, they, well, so there is, while we did engage next phase, that girl, which is, um, excited, more beautiful, maybe there you, um, we had a little, little day. Also, um, the next day, it was around my P E team, it was some people they were done with. Whether we highlight, it was something, it's been really fun, got seen out, and I just traveled, we break up the P A, and on the back, it was really exciting. Um, it was a wonderful day, we're already, we're back, we did, we gave that party, it's all part, we're, we're great, it was fabulous, it was a long day, I was, I was really excited, up today, we're together, great, great. Um, I think also one of the biggest highlights of the spring, both, he was a collaborator, he was a fundraiser, um, and he had to leave the presentation. He had, um, that's what lots that are, um, the closing, and so this group, so, uh, the, the group has turned it, and they gave great jobs, and all of that. There's a lot of, um, for lots of, uh, the, it's a cycle that's getting smaller.
We'll talk about more what we look at in terms of data. When we get to a different slide, any questions on the basics of IAR? Oh, should also say it's English and math. So it's reading and math, just those two subjects.
I have a quick question. So I know you mentioned that we're not ready, you know, at this point to compare. These assessments while we were doing pre-COVID. At what point do we see that we will be able to kind of take a look at?
Generally, when I talk to people about data, you want to have three years of data. So we're looking at two right now. They just took the third one. What happens is IAR is given in the spring, but unfortunately, we don't get the data until August. And so we don't have that third year after COVID to do that. There are different things that are happening. Because of, you know, I mean, I'm sure you've all heard of like the COVID slide and they're trying to figure out what's happening with learning. We'll talk a little bit about MAP, what they they're doing. But Illinois is basically just given the same test. Not really making any. Accommodations, just saying you're taking the test. So, I don't. They they use, they tend to look at growth. I don't think they've started, they've looked at the growth yet after COVID because of that.
Is there a team of people that would come forth and say, we have to make changes to this test given COVID and?
It's not so much changes to the test, it's what's expected from the students. Because this, the the test is still testing grade level standards. You know, what what we're looking at in education over the last couple of years is what do we do for our students that have fallen behind because of COVID? You know, and different places are doing different things. Some states are extending this the school day. I have a friend who's in New Mexico, they're extending the school day. There's different places that are doing different things. I think, you know, and you know. Your administrative team can say what they're looking at. When I look at the data, I don't want to really compare it to pre-COVID yet. I'm comparing it to what's been happening the last couple of years.
Did you see any difference in the COVID side? When the COVID hit the the at the level of. Standard level went down or up or?
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, there is definitely a slide and for what students have been capable for, especially like in the intermediate grades. And we'll see some of that when we look at the the performance scores. But the intermediate students, so when I say intermediate, I mean like third, fourth, fifth. Because they were, and you know, as you can see, everybody nodding here, they were in like kindergarten, first and second, and those were really. Kindergarten is the most important year in education, just. As someone who teaches high school right now, I can still say that. So, and then I think those students and we're we're playing the catch-up game. So that's the IAR, that is the state gives that test, sends it to us in boxes and we give it to students. Okay, measures of academic progress. Okay, this is also a state requirement because the state requires each school to have a growth measure. And so just there are different growth measures out there. The one that is primarily used in this area is MAP. It is also used for the growth measure for state requirement. It's also used in the teacher evaluation plan. For for the this state has. And a mandated that is happening, even though it's. Kind of off for the last couple of years, but we're still working on that. It is an achievement assessment. So this is not. The ability of the student, it's what they know now. So it is based off of achievement. And that's why it varies. So some of you might have gotten reports and you might have one percent in this fall, another percent in the winter, another spent in spring. It's not going to be the same percent because it really kind of varies on the questions that they're asked. And what they have maybe just covered in class. Okay, so that's kind of why that tends to be variable. This is given three times a year, so fall, winter and spring. And it's what it's called is computer adaptive, and we're going to look at the next slide to show you kind of what that means. But growth is based on the fall performance. So that's one of the reasons you give that in the fall. We look at the fall scores and then they take the the test again in the winter. And we compare how much they've grown from fall to winter to the norms for that test. And then that gives you your, whether or not you've met your growth. So those of you who've seen the reports, it's by points and it'll say like, you're supposed to make eight points of growth and you made 12. Yay, you know, so those are those, that kind of growth measure. It is an untimed test. NWA and MAP basically highly recommends that it does not take longer than 60 minutes. But it is on time, students can take anywhere from. I've seen kids get a 99% in 12 minutes and I've seen them take a lot longer than they should. Okay, so that's kind of MAP is one of that kind of thing. So let's just look at computer adaptive before I take any questions. So what happens is your second graders, if you have a second grader, will start math in the fall. Everyone will basically start at the same question, same type of question. If you get it right, you're going to get harder questions. Because they're trying to see how much that you know. If you don't get it right, so see how the wrong answers, if you get a wrong answer, your questions tend to go down. So they're, they don't want to continue to ask you super hard questions if you're not sure about that information. And so they'll tend to ask you questions of a lesser. Lesser level, can't think of a better word right now. It's bad. Okay. So that's kind of what's happening. So it kind of goes bounces around and there's like 41 to 43 questions. And so it takes that time to really get a clear picture of what that student knows. So some students might answer 43, some students might answer 41, just as long as they get to that set, RIT, the RIT score is what they call it. Questions on MAP?
I, for MAP and for IAR, are they K through eight, all all grade levels?
So IAR is third through eight and MAP is second through eight. It's great questions.
Do you have a slide that shows what we get as parents?
I do not have the report, no.
Because sometimes it's a little like confusing, like I'm just gonna blurt out anything. Let's say for reading average is that middle bar, correct? In the middle, and then your child scores on the left side of the bar.
There's three bars.
Three bars.
So the first bar is your child's score. The middle bar is the school's score. And the third bar is the national score.
So let's say this school got a 210.
Right.
And your child's got a 208.
Right.
So like a couple of points off, but then on the right side, it says like 35th percentile.
Okay.
Or something. How do you, how does, how do you make sense out of that for someone?
Okay, so what happens is that raw score, so that 208 that you mentioned, right? NWA has done all, they they do all the work and they do all the norming, they take an entire year scores. Okay, and they look and they say. In second grade, we'll just make this up, 28 in second grade would be really good, but 208 in second grade. What percentage is that based on all second graders that took the test?
In the United States.
There's people that take.
Or Illinois.
People that take NWA. Okay, so I know that there's people internationally that take it as well, so I don't want to just say the United States. People that's, because it's in English and Spanish, so I just throw that out there. So yeah, so that's where they come up with those percentages. They give us, and that's the national norm. Okay, so that's your achievement percentile. Does that make sense?
I'll keep reading.
And if you have questions, I mean, I can definitely, they're, they, NWA does provide the reports annotated. So that you can see what all those different things mean. But yeah, the the. Big things to realize are, there's a lot. It's what area you might want your child to look at, you know, that it goes into like goal areas. There's like four for math and. Five for reading, you know, so different areas where they might be higher or lower in.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about MAP?
Is this map, is this English and math also?
Yes. All right.
I just thought of a question, sorry. Is this a, are these assessments for public schools only or do private schools?
Private schools take them as well.
Take them as well.
Yeah. Anybody, let me, anybody that will pay for them.
So the district purchases the test. And so any school that would want to use this type of measure can purchase the test.
But she said it's a state requirement, so.
So, so what happens is, so like Hill O'Toole uses MAP as well. They don't have to report that to the state, they use MAP for their own growth. Seventy-two uses MAP for to look at the growth of the students, but the state also requires a growth measure. It doesn't have to be MAP. It could be like some people use Renaissance or start, it could be a different measure, but it has to show growth of your students.
Okay, okay, so it's not necessarily this particular one.
No, it's just anyone and. District seventy-two chosen NWA as that growth measure.
Thank you.
And I believe all of the township schools here in Niles Township.
Everyone.
As well, and so. Depending on how collegial everybody feels. Sometimes we do like to look at how the other schools in Niles Township are performing on MAP. Because it gives us a sense of who our students are then going to high school with, for the most part. So that happens from time to time, but not all the time, so.
Not recently.
But that was part of the decision to go with MAP was that the township schools were going with it. We could do professional development together. And we would have that database to hopefully to help.
And is that public information as to how, obviously not how the student falls, but how the school district falls? Is that public information out there?
It depends on if the school provides it.
Right.
So the IAR scores, they have to provide. So that is mandated and you can access those. The MAP scores generally, it depends on if you can get into a board report. And they publish them in a board report. But it's not like a link on the webpage. Some school districts have that, but some school districts don't. All right, so the next test is what's called the cognitive abilities test. This is the COGAT. This is a test of ability, so it's not of achievement. It's abilities, it's given once a year. Here at District seventy-two to second, third, fourth and sixth graders, as well as any new student. It is used for student identification. But again, it's only one piece of student identification. It's just a nice measure to go along with the achievement data and your abilities data. I find it's really helpful to have both as well as classroom data to be able to get the whole picture of a student. All right. Any questions on COGAT?
Just one weird one, why isn't it offered to fifth graders?
Because generally COGAT is, scores are good for two years.
Okay.
So that's why they tend to do that.
Thank you.
All right, the last test that we're going to talk about is what's called FastBridge. Some of you may not have seen this. It is basically a curriculum-based measure, so it's basically. The idea is to assess curriculum, what's taught in the classroom. So an example is for my little kindergarteners, letter naming fluency. So it will test to see how many letters they can name in a minute. So that's the kind of skills that it is. And then basically what it's for is for interventions. It is an intervention. Measure to see if a student is falling behind and might need some more help to get caught up to peers. And this is also given three times a year and fall, winter and spring. Any questions on FastBridge? Okay, so those are the four standardized assessments that are given here. What I want to look at and what Dr. Whittaker asked me to provide. Were the performance levels for the last two years, both with IAR, I think we actually have three years. Yeah, two years for IAR because we don't have the spring scores yet, we won't have those until fall, and then three years for MAP. So, big thing with IAR, we have the last two years, remember this is post-COVID. And both of these assessments are still being based on pre-COVID norms, which is important. Because this is what was expected by the kids before they missed out on like basically a year and a half of instruction. Okay, the percent. That is provided for IAR is the percent of students that were meeting and exceeding. Remember how I told you that there were five levels for IAR? This is just four and five. So some states use three, four and five, but Illinois uses four and five. Okay, so here's what's happening. Get, we're kind of off the slide. Okay, so this is math. The green bar are the percent of students in 2021, it was 35% of students at Fairview were meeting and exceeding. And in 2022, it's 41%. The state is at 25% for the last two years. I can tell you right now that the state is about. Eighteen percent lower than it usually was and Fairview is a lot lower than it usually is. So this is something, but the nice thing for math is at least it's starting to increase. And we'll be interested to see what happens with this year's IAR, to see how those scores come back in the fall.
I know you mentioned IAR is a federal requirement, so I assume there's national data as well?
So, you would think so. Each state decides what they want to do. So there are some states that, so notice how this says Illinois Assessment of Readiness. This is just for Illinois. It's based off of what was before this was the park. And that was more supposedly the, a goal, the goal. Was for it to be a national test, so you could do national comparisons. Unfortunately. Best laid plans didn't work. So, this is IAR, it's basically, they say it's pretty much like the park, so you could make some comparisons, but it is an Illinois test. Okay, so this is math. Reading, the percent of students meeting and exceeding is higher. So that was 55%, both the this year, the two years previous to this year, and then 30% for the state. Okay, so these are the students meeting and exceeding standards. Again, the 55% is lower than what we tended to see prior to COVID.
The question I would have for like Cindy. Seeing that there's no change in reading, but there was changes in math. Is that something that obviously we've taken into consideration? I know there's a new math program that we're rolling out. Are those some of the things that we were thinking about?
Yes, there's a multitude of things between interventions, the new math program. Additional staff for those intervention programs. We're trying to approach it on a variety of levels. You know, really trying to identify where those gaps are for students. And you know, Fairview came back to school relatively quickly compared to other places. But we still had a large, we we gave parents the choice, if you remember, and we had a large number of students who did stay out longer. Than than the rest. So it's sort of a, you know. It's a mixed blessing that we're so small because we can really zero in on those students who seem to have those gaps. That we identify through these measures and through our teachers' feedback. But it also, it it really impacts those scores because it's a small pool, if that makes sense. So, it's, it's, when we came out of COVID. You know, what we were hearing was this is going to take years.
Yeah.
To recover from in terms of student learning. And so we're getting to years plural and beyond. And I still think it's going to take quite some time.
So like, what were our numbers pre-COVID? I know you said you weren't gonna talk about those, but it's make.
I'm old and I can't.
We'd be happy to, you know, go back.
Yeah, we can, we have that information. We have the information, yeah.
Yeah, we can provide that to board, not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is. IAR, so for MAP, we're going to be looking at particularly what, we talked about that 208. We were using as an example, that is the RIT score, okay? And what happens is we have these things called percent, achievement percentiles for the grade. Okay, and so. We look at MAP scores in two different ways. We look at the achievement percentiles and we look at growth. And the achievement percentiles is where the raw score for the entire grade compares to other grades that. In the NWA norm. Okay, so we, you might say second grade has an average RIT of 210. And then where does that fall on all the second grades that take MAP? Okay, and that's the achievement percentile. And we look at the spring percentiles. And the goal is, so this, so if we look at this right now, these are spring percentiles for the last three years. Okay, the light green is from 2021. The, I don't know, medium green is from 2022 and the dark green is from 2023. So you can see that Fairview students. Have a higher, they're they're not average. Okay, they're above average in their national percentile. And the goal is to keep them moving forward. Okay, so I think, what do we have next? Yeah, I did this one next. That didn't change. So this is also reading. I want to jump to one. Oh, we did it by growth, we didn't do it for percentiles. Okay, so what we want to see is that hopefully the percentiles are the same for the grade. Or that they've increased over the years. And you can see some grades that are, that the student, the grade level is improving. And others where more of a discussion is made at that grade level. Okay, so what that's saying is that that average RIT for that grade is at that percentile for that year. So for eighth grade, eighty, the the mean RIT for the eighth grade math was at the 86 percentile this year. The blue, oh, sorry, this one's reading. Okay, so green was math and then the blue is reading.
And and we were just talking on the side, though, the the bars for second grade represent different groups of students. So they're second graders and.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, second graders and twenty, so you have to follow them. Can you explain how to follow them?
I mean, you can say you can follow, I mean, we're, we do.
I mean, the cohorts may not be exactly the same.
I have the cohorts for growth, but if you look at this, so I'm going to take the 76 percentile for second grade. Okay, for 2021, and then I go to third grade in 2022 and they're at the 85th percentile. And then I go to fourth grade in 2023 and they're at the 73rd percentile.
So, so that would cause us to pause and wonder what's going on with those students.
Right.
Right? Why do they take that, you know, dip in fourth grade? So that's part of what we do with our teachers during staff development and through Nick Connor's role. In working with teachers and assessment is looking at that and trying to understand what is that, what is that about? What happened there? And then how do we overcome it?
So that's math and then reading. And reading, because you can look at, so like fifth grade, was it the 55th percentile in 2021? Was it the 63rd in 22 and then was at the 69th in 23? So then there was kind of an increasing for that grade in the percentiles, which is kind of what we're looking for.
I have a question regarding third grade. I see the math and reading in spring 2023 went down a little, too far down. If you go to math too, is you can see that it's a big down, why? Just that class. Sixty-five here.
So I don't, I mean, you are correct, you're reading my slides correctly. It's a question that then the teachers need to look at to see what's happening with that group. But again, remember I said those third, fourth and fifth graders? They're really struggling because of COVID. So if you think about those third graders, what were they in kindergarten? That's, remember when I said kindergarten is the most important year? So that's, that's one of those things that's. That the the teachers and I know that the school is looking at.
But what you also noticed from those slides is that the third grade is low. They're consistently low between reading and math.
Yeah.
So it's about that group probably more so than anything.
That, and that's another picture. So you you also have to realize too, that it's one point of data. So you also have to look at when they took the test, what was happening, you know, those kinds of things also have to play into it. Okay, so the next thing is growth. Okay, so that's just kind of achievement percentile. It's almost like bragging rights for the most part, like, oh, our kids are scoring better than other places. Typical growth is what we look at as teachers to say that our students have made growth over the year. Okay, and the growth goal is based off of 2020 pre-COVID norms. Okay, so this is, can be challenging for our students through the last couple of years. They are re-norming MAP scores in 2024. So this next year will be the last one on pre-COVID norms and then the following year will be off of. Norms of students who lived through COVID. Okay, so that'll be a little more precise of what we're looking at. Again, growth is determined by the fall RIT score. And the weeks of instruction. So they set the weeks of instruction for NWA, 32 weeks from fall to spring. And whatever you grew in fall, they compare it to everybody else that grew that same amount. And see how many points they grew. So if you're in like second grade, you're probably growing like 10, 11 or 12 points. If you're in eighth grade, it's like two points. Because if you think about the different grade levels and how much growth is occurring there. Okay, so when we look at growth in District seventy-two, we look at from fall to spring. So what happens when our students are in front of us for that year? Okay, so we're going to look at it overall and then by the cohort that we were looking at before. Okay, so growth for students in the last three years. Has gone the first year after COVID, the growth was at 45% for the district. Last year for math, it was at 60% and this year it was 52%. Let me, let me say something because a lot of you are probably like, why is it not 100%? NWA states that if you're at 50% growth. You have done the 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 standard job. Okay, because that's what they're expecting. They're expecting 50% growth. In a district like Fairview, they're expecting more because it's a high-performing district and they expect. That that they want the students to grow more than the norm. Okay, and so that's why when we're looking at this, you know, we want to see that trend above 50%. But just, you know, I've I've had a lot of people say, well, why can't it be 100%? Like, it's statistically impossible. So, I've only seen in my 15 years doing this, like two classes that have gotten like 100%. So like, it's, it's very, very difficult, okay? So this is for math. And then this was the cohort as we talked about. So like you can see on your current eighth grade. In 20, from 2020, fall to spring. In 2020 to 2021 was 49% of the students met their growth and then the next two years it was 54th. The really good one is your current sixth grade. And the amount of growth that they've made over the last three years. So you can just kind of see that and it's for t- teachers to look at and to figure out. What do we need to do, what's happening? How can we help our students more? Alright, so this is math. This is the reading by grade. So again, reading for the district was 43% then 52 and then this last spring it was at 46%. The cohorts, again, we can see the nice little stair steps for sixth and seventh grade. Generally around, for fifth grade, that's basically the same. When you're, you you have a. Small N, so when you're looking at five to 10%, you know, that's kind of like the same thing. Because that's not that many kids. And so that's kind of what we're looking at and what your teachers are looking at to see. How they can improve their instruction, how they can adjust curriculum, how they can help students. Any questions? So the goal in the spring is to report on these two measures, the achievement percentiles and the growth. And then IAR, the next year would be like in the fall, just because. The state likes to sit on those. Questions? Alright, thank you.
Any other questions on the board? You, you good? Okay. Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you all for asking the questions. Like I said, we're really trying to encourage more discussion around the board table and so those questions spur on ideas in other people's heads too. And, you know, lead to a a better conversation. So, you know, we'll look forward to seeing Dr. Olson again, you know, in in the future. But please, if you have questions along the way, feel free to send them my way. And if I can't answer them, you know, she's always happy to to help us out, so.
Will we get an update in the fall when we get the new results from Hugh or from?
We will likely come back in the fall. ISB releases those test scores on Halloween. Yeah, it's kind of interesting that they choose that date. You know, we'd get to preview those and make any corrections if we think there are errors or problems with it before then. But it wouldn't be until it's publicly released that we could come back and talk about it till late fall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the Legos. A large Lego donation for our Makerspace, so. So thank you very much. Okay, next up we have our second reading of board policies. Last month, we did a pretty in-depth discussion of each of the policies and I I'm not feeling the need to go through them all again to that level. However, you know, as you've thought about the policies over the past month, you might. Um, however, you know, as you've thought about the policies over the past month, you might have questions, thoughts, concerns. Now would be the time to share those and we can discuss it. If not, then um these policies would be approved later on in the in the meeting. So does anybody have any? Questions, comments? I know there was a lot. Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, finally, I um provided the June Superintendent's Report and I'll highlight a few items. Um, thank you to the board members who attended our eighth grade graduation. We're very happy to have your presence there. So you can see what that event is like if you haven't experienced it uh with your own children. So. That was great. I I know that the kids, um, as well as our teaching staff appreciate seeing board members at those types of important milestone events for us. Um, this Saturday, we're going to be hosting the Skokie Police Department written exam. Um, so the village um does a lot of things to support our school district. So from time to time, they have a favor of us. And so those individuals who are hoping to become police officers will be here on Saturday morning, and they'll be taking a written test as part of their process. So I wanted to make you aware of that. Um, our senior celebration, um, this was an idea um that came from our teaching staff many years ago. We invite our um graduates, our high school graduates, former Falcons, to come back and celebrate graduation. And this is probably my most favorite Fairview event, uh, because we get a chance to see our former students, see what they're. Up to, see how much they've grown. And I think for our staff, it's just very powerful to see the impact that we have on the students. Um, whether they're, you know, going off to the military or they're going off to college or whatever it might be that they're doing. Um, it just makes us feel good to be able to keep that connection. Um, and so that was a very well-attended event. Um, I'd say we had maybe eighty-five percent, ninety percent of our. Yeah. Right. Right.
How does that, how does that reach out happen?
That the high school helps us with that. Um, so two nineteen does help us with that, and then social media, um, the word kind of spreads. Um, but they come back and they love walking around the building and Karen Kemp, our food service director, prepares some of their favorite treats. Uh, Crispitos. Um, not their most healthy uh school meal, but uh one of their favorites. And then, you know, we do cake and they get their, um, one of the traditions of eighth grade is they write a letter to self. Um, so sort of where they see themselves, you know, maybe in four years, so they get their letter back. And so they really enjoy. Opening those letters and reading their sort of eighth grade self uh reflections. So um, just a really, really cool event. Um. Let's see, um, we added a few construction banners. Um, one's covered up by a dumpster right now, which I'm not real happy about, but um, we do have.
Dumpster?
Yeah, we, right, it could get damaged. Um, but there is one facing the park, just sort of, I, just an attempt to really let the community know the benefits of the project. Um, and you know, just we're so grateful of everybody's continued patience. Um. Let's see. Uh, packing and moving classrooms, I I, on our board tour, I didn't take you to the small gym, but I should have, because it's loaded literally from floor to ceiling. With thousands of boxes. Um, Charlie and Will Whittaker helped with some of the move and, you know, they they were upset that I, they didn't extract. A per-box rate from me, uh, because there were so many boxes. Um, but our teachers did a great job. Um, we're packed up and we literally started demolition on Monday, June twelfth. So that meant a a large number of classrooms had to be completely empty, and it was no short, it was no small task. Um, our administrative team had some fun. Fun Friday afternoon, um, after the teachers were done with their special lunch and whatnot for the day and we. We cleared classrooms. It was just like a team-building activity, right? Yeah. So rolled up our sleeves and moved stuff. Um, and then, um, you know, I'll just mention, um. You know that we are concerned about the safety of the site, even though the children aren't here. Um, you know, we are aware that uh Shack Park and the Sled Hill are a place that. Students like to congregate, especially on the Fourth of July, and that's lots of fireworks are set off. Um, we will be having a special watch. Um, on the um whole site over the Fourth of July by the police department. I ask those of you who are in the neighborhood, please call the police. Um, you know, I'm very concerned about the issues, especially with construction going on. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we had quite a scene here. And we found fireworks shells all over the roof of our building, and you know, it really can be a very dangerous situation. So, um, if you can spread the word that we've asked the police to help us out on those couple of nights around the Fourth of July weekend. Um, but we've also asked that students stay completely off premises. The track is now closed. Soccer field is closed. There's no blacktop to ride bikes on. There's no sidewalk around the back of the building. There's nothing. Um, so you know, we are concerned about the safety of the site, even though they're not here with us every single day. Um, so we'll just continue to kind of get that word out. But um, in terms of construction, we are feeling good about the progress. It's really moving along now. Um. Uh, so many things are happening, as you can see just from the outside, um, but we're feeling as though we're still on target. Um, and you know, just watching each day as more and more changes happen, and it's really, really exciting. So. Um, happy to take questions, comments, anything from my report that you'd like to talk about.
I wanted to add how we spoke to Karen. Um, I didn't know if her, yeah, so um. Couple of community members had asked um questions about our school lunches. And so I just wanted to meet with Karen and just kind of ask questions and see what she had and kind of thoughts on what the community wanted. Um, so I did ask if we can add water bottles to the menu. Um, how many little kids, because even my big daughter, like. Forget their water bottle, they're thirsty, they don't drink. So those will be um an item to, I don't want to, something wrong.
Yeah, so there will be bottled water for purchase, which we haven't had. Um, many of our students don't drink milk and they don't like the juice. Um, and carrying the water bottles to lunch, you just kind of get, it's kind of a hassle. They have to take it out for recess. We have probably a thousand of them that get lost and found. Um, and not found. Um, so that will be a nice addition as well as um the fresh salads. Bringing back the salad bar, that was a huge hit with the children. Um, so she's planning on bringing that back. It kind of went away with COVID and. You know, just the health issues around salad bars, um, but she's ready to to bring that back a couple of days a week, which we're excited about. Um, and then she's also going to be adding some new salads for students um on the menu. Currently, she does offer staff salads um daily, and there's four or five different salads. There's a Portillo salad, there's an Asian salad, you know. Um, so we'd like to now offer those to students as well. Um, and we think that they're looking for some different healthier options and that that will be a nice. Add-on. So, um, I think the point is, is that, you know, as board members, when you're hearing things from the community, please share them with us. Um, what it led to was, you know. Diana and myself sitting down with our food service director and just having the conversation, you know, hey, what about water bottles? What about this? Um, and we were able to, you know, there were some other things we talked about that, you know, we're not necessarily seeing going forward, but um, there are many that were. So please don't hesitate to share. We're really open to that kind of feedback.
Nice.
Okay. Okay, I, that is all I had for the board discussion.
All right, next item is our board committees and representatives. Um, the first one is the Ed Red um representative was Raphael, which um you weren't able to make the last meeting.
I don't think he was aware of the last meeting. Yeah, so we will say, say that, but um, Mr. Fair, were you able to attend the meeting? So Ed Red, you know, typically both um Jeff and myself, we do attend those meetings when we can. Um, Jeff is. Uh, better about making those meetings than I am. Um, but you know, they're open to board members as well. We have to make sure to get you in the loop on that, so you can participate. So was there an update from Ed Red?
There we go. There was a end-of-the-year meeting with the State Superintendent Tony Sanders. Um, who just presented a state of the, state of the state, so to speak. He's new in the job relatively in the last couple of months. Um, so it was just an overview of what he's found when he, on the job. There was no real legislative. I know they just had um their lame duck session downstate. They, so they're um closing up shop in Springfield and they're reopening uh soon, but there was nothing really news-wise as far as legislation.
If you could, I I haven't got any notifications, emails, anything.
I can have Bridget Peach, who's the director of Ed Red, I'll have her include you on the emails from now on.
Thank you.
Alright, great.
Um, and TDSC, Jackie, were you able to?
Yes, um, I was at the meeting about two weeks ago. That was my first meeting, so I was able to meet a representative, representative from every uh. Uh, district in Niles. That was nice. Um. And we were, we heard about the uh school year activities at the graduation, all the, you know, happened in the year that passed, and that was nice. Um, there is a board orientation in July, so that'll be helpful. I'll get, kind of, um, have a meeting and. Um, understand more what's going on there and um. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Yeah. Um, PTA? Christine?
Yeah, I was able to attend the last PTA meeting, um, and thank you to Colleen for shepherding me sort of um into the, to the process. Um, as it was a week, I think, before school let out, so there's a lot of discussion around the events happening within that week, graduation. Um, and a couple other following, um, a celebration for the current presidents, um, and thanking them for their time. Introduction to the new presidents, um, and. Um, a list of all the upcoming events and the committee committees, um, and identifying chairs and co-chairs for them. Um, and one thing I'll note is that there are lots of volunteers that are needed for some of these events. So, um, please help spread the word so that we're able to have those events. Um, it was the first time I heard sort of. Um. Though, I wouldn't say lack of volunteers, but really, um. If we could just, you know, solidify some more volunteers moving forward, I think it'll help streamline and ensure that those events can occur and take place. And the students can can enjoy those really fun um events. So anything, I I know there's a lot of PTA members in the. In the, in the room, is anything I may have missed? Nope.
Thank you.
All right, regarding Freedom of Information Act requests, I can report that there was one. Freedom of Information Act request received since the last board meeting and it was handled as required. Um, information and correspondence, there was none.
There actually was one. I apologize, this came in late. Um, so I, do you have it, Miss Boujde? Yes.
Yes, should I read it or?
Or, sure.
Or it was just a thank you note.
Yeah, you can summarize it.
Okay, it was a thank you note for the admin and Fairview Admin and Board of Education. Um, the new addition of Baby Sloan to the family, uh, they appreciated the gifts, which was the blanket and personalized stuffed animal. And, uh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so for when faculty members have a baby, typically the board will send a baby blanket of some sort. Um, we also have Fairview onesies, so we really try to get that Falcon spirit, you know, very early. Um, so yeah, just thank you for summarizing that. I'm sorry that came in kind of the last minute. I couldn't prep you for that.
Patrick, Sam, Jolene, Leila, and Baby Sloan.
And the Stonebirds.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to invite members of the audience to address the public, uh, sorry, to just the board and public comment. If you wish to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name. A three-minute time limit will be set. The board secretary will keep this time. Um, and yeah, I would, anybody like to come up?
Awesome.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Wenning. As most of you know, I have three boys at Fairview. Now that the school year has ended, I just wanted to extend my thanks to the Fairview teachers, staff. Administration for such a successful school year. This was by far the most normal year we've had recently. In addition to all the rich learning. It was great to have so many fun events return. Including field trips, concerts, the art show, STEM night, PTA parties, and a very fun field day. Thank you to all the staff for planning and attending so many events, including many that are outside the normal school day. Even though this was a typical year in many ways, I know there were big challenges faced by all staff. From construction and the addition of extra students after the year began. I was so impressed at all that was done. To make our students from Venezuela welcome at Fairview, and I know it took a lot of work. I also want to thank the members of the District Equity Leadership Team and the staff for all their work, starting to implement the Equity Action Plan. There was a noticeable increase in the celebration of Heritage Months, new literature in the curriculum, and the spin-out presentation, among other things. Representation matters, and I look forward to more progress next year. I wanted to extend a special thanks to Jordan Kilpatrick for her work starting the Student Equity Group that presented last month. As well as all the work she did to develop and implement the primary equity talking circles curriculum. I look forward to the expansion of that program into middle school advisory next year, so that my middle schoolers will benefit as well. I hope that this board will continue to support the work that the school is doing in the area of equity. In addition to celebrating our rich cultural diversity, we as a community need to keep working to make sure that those on the margins. Feel more of a sense of belonging at our school. This work is not easy, but will benefit all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I can confirm that we did not receive any other, any online public comment. Would anyone else like to come up? No? Okay, thank you. Alright, we are going to our action items. Um, may I have a motion and a second to? I'm just gonna.
Okay, so you're you're gonna have to bear with us here. There are a lot of action items, and they all require a roll call vote. Some might require a little explanation, so Jeff is prepared um on some of these resolutions. Um, but please, with the motions and the seconds, go slow, so we can record this properly, right, Jackie? Um, I'm trying, trying to jot them down too. Um, but there's a lot here, but this is the legally correct way to make all of these actions. Um, have board approval. So it is going to take a few minutes. Sorry, audience, if you want to cut out now, I I understand why. Um, but we do have to go through them one by one.
Okay, we have ten to go through, so bear with me. Alright, may I have a motion and a second to approve the amended FY twenty-three budget?
A motion.
No, second.
Alright, will the board secretary please call a roll call vote? Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um. Second one, approve resolution of authorizing an inter-fund transfer from the Education Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund. Can I get a motion and a second?
A motion.
I'll second.
Would you like to say anything, or does anyone have any final questions?
The two million dollars that we talked about before.
Okay, perfect. Uh, board secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, may I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing transfer to capital project? Sorry, authorizing transfer to Capital Projects Fund.
A motion.
A second. Any questions on this one? Final thoughts? Jeff?
Second part of the first transfer that we talked about.
The secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Great. Adapt resolution authorizing transfer of interest from the Working Cash Fund to the Education Fund. Can I get a motion and a second?
A motion.
I'll second.
Any questions on this one? Final thoughts? Okay. Uh, secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Okay. Mm-hmm. May I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution abating working cash funds to operations and maintenance capital project fund?
A motion.
A second.
Uh, board secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Yes. Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Halfway there. Alright, may I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution to pay the June bills?
A motion.
A second.
Why don't you explain this for the new board members, please?
So for the last three years since we've foregone having a July board meeting, there is a resolution you can adopt as a board. To authorize the business office to continue to pay the bills. The board will still receive the listing of the bills, the break, the financials that they do every month. It just is because we do not have a board meeting. It's authorizing any bills that are paid in the month of June to be paid at a July board, in the time of July that there would be a board meeting.
Got it, thank you for that.
Alright, um, board secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Sure, should we go backwards?
Sure.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Saji Philip?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Diana Diakakis?
Yes. May I have a motion and a second to adopt a board policies as dis- May I have a motion in a second to adopt the board policies as discussed?
A motion.
I'll second.
Any final questions on the policies? Nope. Alright, secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes. Alright, may I have a motion in a second to approve termination of an education support personnel?
Some of.
I'll second. Will the secretary please call the roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes. Um, a motion and a second to approve for food service agreement with Culver District seventy-one. I'll motion, I'll second. And then Cindy, if you want to explain.
Okay, um, so Fairview and uh, Culver District seventy-one over in Niles, um, we have an intergovernmental agreement to share our food service director. Um, so Karen Kemp supports their food service program. We're very similar in size and being K eight buildings and our food service programs are very similar. So it makes a lot of sense. For us to share in employees, we share the costs. Um, but also um, anytime small districts can collaborate. Um, to save money, um, you know, we try to seek out those opportunities. So this is a savings for both us and Culver because we don't. Both have to employ a full-time person. Um, so she does spend um, one day a week at Culver. Um, but she also does all of their um, ordering of food, for example. Um, a lot of the menu is the same as Fairview's menu, so the order that she places for Culver is very similar to the order she places for Fairview. So there's some efficiencies there. Um, and so we think that this is of tremendous benefit to us and to Culver. Um, their board will be uh, reviewing the agreement also uh, this month. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We've been doing this. Ooh, Jeff, help me out. How long have we had this agreement in place? I'm gonna say five. Five or six years. Um, and it really started because Culver's um, director retired, moved on, whatever. Um, and just in trying to think through how to replace that person, um, the superintendent called me and said, you know, you've got a great person, could we share? How could we make this work? So. It's a good example of a collaboration between small districts. Um, you know, you often hear about the inefficiencies of all these small, little, tiny school districts in Illinois. Um, but there are ways to, to work through those if you get creative. So, so that's really what the agreement's about.
Great. Alright, uh, board secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Sure. Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes. Great, final one. May I have a motion in a second to approve employment of personnel?
Motion.
I'll second, okay. Just second. Thank you. Board secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Saji Phillip?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes. Great.
And just before we move on, just for the benefit of the audience, um, those were discussed in closed session. We had four teaching position openings. Um, and so this is the employment of four teachers for next school year. Um, so we're happy to have our full-time teaching positions filled that we currently are aware of. Um, and now we're moving on to working on those part-time positions that we have. Um, and we're also really excited to have um, a full complement of uh, instructional aids for next year. Uh, we really, Carly specifically, really focused on supporting that group of employee. Um, and helping them feel really connected to Fairview. So we're really feeling rewarded by many of them returning to us like for another year. So. Um, sorry, I probably should have said that before you voted, but just so that there's clarity for everybody here, what that was all about.
Great. Alright, um, items for future consideration. Does anyone have any items for future considerations to share for the next meeting? Which will be in August? No? Okay. May I, anything else you want to add?
No, I just think about our August meeting. We'll have a, a board construction tour and hopefully there'll be cabinetry and paint and carpeting and it should be. So close to being finished by the next time you all are back here. So uh, fingers crossed, whatever you need to send our way, you know, keep it coming our way.
Jeff's ready to help out.
Yeah.
The board tours are great. It's, it's nice to see the progress because it. Like from the outside, it still looks like a complete construction mess, but just seeing it over time, it, it really is coming together very nicely and it's exciting.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to show that progress. In my last community update, I tried to include photos of sort of. What the vision is and what the current reality is. So hopefully that helped a little bit, but um, it's unfortunate that we can't, you know, sort of get a drone in there and, and take some video, but um, you know, we're trying to. Patrick has a drone too. I mean, I think, I, I don't know, I don't think the construction company cares for that idea too much, but yeah, so thank you.
Alright, um, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting of Fairview Board of Education at eight twenty-two PM?
A motion.
I'll second.
Great. Board secretary, can you please call a roll call vote?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yeah.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saji Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Great. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.